Good evening. I'd like to call to order the December 12, 2023 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees. I would like to also point out or mention that Mrs. Agostini is joining us this evening via telephone. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to approve the agenda for the December 12, 2023 Board Meeting.
Is there a second? Is that Mrs. McFadden? Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to approve tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All right. Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. We will now move on to item 3.1, Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to convene to Executive Session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, safety and security update, receipt of legal advice regarding a litigation update, personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation instrument, student admission request into the district adult ed program, and employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second? Motion made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, is that look correct? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. The board will now enter Executive Session. May I have a motion to end Executive Session?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move that we ended Executive Session at 7:07 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. McFadden, executed by Mrs. Porter to bring us out of Executive Session. Is there any discussion? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. We will now move on to our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Mrs. LaShawta McFadden will introduce tonight's guest.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Bruce Robinson, pastor of City of Hope Church here in Columbia, South Carolina.
Good evening to the deputies superintendent, to the executive chair, and to the trustees, as well as the portion of other proposed charter that we have. Today, we stand at the crossroads of an immense chance, a juncture where collaboration, unity, and shared vision pave the way for progress. Partnership in its truest form is not just an amalgamation of ideas and entities, it is the cornerstone upon which ideas, growth, and social change are built. In a world brimming with complexities and challenges, partnerships are the benefit in minimizing chasms between challenge and the solution. It is in this moment that the profound potential of partnerships emerges a force capable of transcending boundaries, shattering barriers, and curating a future of ripe promise. Partnership is the fusion of diverse perspectives, skills, and resources that birth something far greater than the victory of one when our hurdles hinder us all. Whether in business or any type of endeavor, partnerships catalyze progress by harnessing the collective strength of everyone and moves us towards a common objective. In the realm of innovation, partnerships serve as a catalyst for groundbreaking discoveries and holistic advancements. It is the fusion of minds and the merging of expertise that propels us beyond conventional limits. However, the partnership extends far beyond the confines of a boardroom. It reverberates through the corridors of diplomacy by forging alliances that transcend all types of opposition and deflates oppression. Partnerships are pragmatic mechanisms that enable us to manifest ideas into betterment. Yet, the true reason of partnership lies not solely in achieving strategic objectives, but in our case, the success for our children. Partnerships become the conduance through which the empowerment and equality are propagated. They are the bridges connecting those in need with those possessing the means to curate change. Can we consider for a moment, in my closing, the child who future brightens as partnership brings us to an accomplishment never seen before? The potential of partnership is not a distant concept, it is a tangible reality awaiting our collective embrace. However, partnership requires more than mere acknowledgement of potential. Partnership demands commitment, a commitment to transcend individual interests and embrace a broader shared purpose. The path to meaningful partnerships is not without obstacles. Trust must be cultivated. We must set our own personal agendas aside, and differences are embraced as strengths rather than divisions. It calls for active listening and a genuine willingness to understand and respect divergent viewpoints. As we stand on the cusp of the future, let us forge partnerships that transcend boundaries, that transcend adversity into the opportunity that tethers progress and prosperity for generations to come. In closing, let us become the architects of not only academic but holistic change. Let us seek collaboration over the competition and unity over division, for it is in partnership that we find the catalyst for progress, the key to unlocking the boundless potential that lies within our collective resolve. It is our desire that this hope yields us one victory. H is for the help that shall reap harvest, O is for the opportunity to recreate narratives, P is for the potential which is our fuel. Education is the foundation to our power. Thank you so much. If we can do our pledge of allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all so much.
And thank you. I failed to mention a moment ago that Mrs. Agostini is joining us by phone this afternoon. We'll now move on to item 5.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the December 12, 2023 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, is that correct on the screen? Mrs. Agostini, have you had a chance to vote?
I just did. Sorry, wasn't going through. I voted in the affirmative, if that helps.
Okay, thanks. All right, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. We will now move on to public participation. This evening, two individuals have signed up to address the board. You each be given three minutes to address the board. To assist in timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Our first speaker this evening will be Ethan Lopez.
Is it working? Okay. Only 25% of our middle schoolers meet our math requirements, yet all of them will move on to high school. But the district then has the audacity to send people from this office to harass our ninth grade math teachers about not being on time with their pacing guides, right after this office allowed all of those failing students to move on to high school. Of course, these teachers are going to be behind when 90% of their classes don't even know how to do basic arithmetic. But instead of this office actually asking our teachers how they can help, they choose to leave these teachers in the dust and find some other way to justify their jobs. What makes this so hypocritical is that this office took almost three and a half months past the required state due date to get the audit report done. So no fault but your own. But when our teachers are behind a few weeks on a pacing guide to the fault of this office, all hell breaks loose. That's the issue. There's a lack of trust going on. This office and school administration have to trust that our teachers know what they are doing and that they will get their students where they need to be on time. I can assure you, if all of you were put on a pacing guide, you'd all be screwed, three and a half months behind kind of screwed. So if any of you think about going and harassing our teachers about a pacing guide, when this office is notorious at being behind. But it seems our teachers are the only ones around here who have to actually follow rules to keep their jobs. This office is not a safe place for teachers and will continue to be until you look past the fake attitudes from school admin and actually focus on the issues our teachers are having. For example, we have school admin asking our teachers in parent-teacher conferences, what are you not doing to help this child succeed? Why are you allowing this student to fail? When we have school admin who believe our teachers are the issue, we have lost all hope in trying to keep our teachers from leaving. This should be a wake-up call, that now is the time to do something. Dr. Moore, you are here to advocate for our teachers and fix the issues they brought before you during your hiring process and after, even if that means you have to recommend a few people to this board to be fired. Because I can assure you that if you don't listen to our teachers and back down when they need you the most, your contract will end a lot sooner than you think, because I will rally around our teachers and students to find someone who will stick up for our teachers and get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be David Oberle.
Hello. Is this on? Okay. Yeah, I haven't seen y'all in a while. Didn't want to see y'all for a while, but I have to. I have two issues tonight. One, I have addressed with the board in its entirety, but I do want to make a suggestion. For obviously those that don't know, my daughters are in fourth grade, and they were given a form about opting in or opting out of a health film. And in that form, there were words that I hope my daughters would learn when my wife and I decided when they would learn these words, not when the school decided to. So the school district said, no, they can learn these words now. So I get to explain to my daughters what these words mean, menstruation, puberty, things like that. I had hoped I had a little more time before I had to address these subjects with my daughters, but the district decided, no, it's time to do that now. If you want to look at a policy change, I'm looking at policy IHAM, Health Education, and it talks about how the district will notify parents. How about directly notify parents? Notify only the parents, not the child. Not giving the child a piece of paper to go home with these words on to say, Daddy, what's that word mean? Simple change. That's all I'm asking right now, is considered a policy change. The other issue I want to bring up is last night, a different district had a successful book challenge. I know we keep hearing these buzzwords like banning and things like that. The book that is in question, and I won't say the name, I don't know if it's present in Richland Two because unfortunately, this district made a change a few years ago where they said, you used to be able to log on to computer and see what titles were in different libraries. You can't do that anymore. I don't understand why not. It's not intrusive. You're just logging onto a computer to see if these titles are in schools. It would help us to know what books are in these libraries. But fortunately, this district decided that based on the content of the book, it was not appropriate for schools. You can't, I could begin to read the words right here. I'd feel filthy if I did read these words. But when people talk about banning books, it's not banning books. You want to get that book to your kid, have at it. Go get it on Amazon, go get it somewhere else, get it to them. We're not stopping you from getting those books to your children. I personally don't want my children having access to these books in a library. They have the whole library there. No librarian has read every book. The people that a lot of times defend these books, when you say, have you read it? No. Okay, so, well, we have. We've read these books. We know what's in these books. So don't tell me that book is okay when you haven't read the book. So those people that talk about banning, it's not banning. It's just being selective what materials are appropriate in school libraries. Again, if you want to have that book at your home, that's fine. We're not stopping you from doing that. But it don't need to be in school libraries. So I hope that the district will first change the policy where we can see what book titles are in the libraries, and two, when these kind of books come forward, have some discretion and consider the morals that a lot of parents have as far as having these books in libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. The board will now vote on Executive Session items. May I please have a motion regarding the student appeals?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I'm going to break these out for student appeals. I move to uphold the administration's recommendation for student number one.
Is there a second? Is that Mrs. Porter?
Mrs. McFadden.
Mrs. McFadden, sorry. All right, motion made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you. I want to let the public know that I'm going to abstain from many of these votes tonight regarding our student appeals based upon, in my opinion, the information that we've received for several of these is inconsistent, unclear, and incomplete documentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Mrs. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs., Dr. Scott.
Yes, before we move forward, we have, I think, is it six or seven appeals before us? And the comment that Ms. Agostini made, I don't want any misunderstanding to the public and our viewers. So if you will be clear on your statement, are you stating that misinformation is for every case that's before us or specific ones?
No, I am saying for the ones where I abstain from my vote, there will be five of them. It is my opinion that I had inconsistent, unclear, or incomplete information that I needed to make my decision. Thank you.
Okay, so on the ones that you're abstaining from. I just wanted clarity on that, because I'm not sure if many of us will agree, and we can agree to disagree, but I just wanted clarity. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is that correct, Mrs. Nash?
That is correct.
The vote is five yes, one no, and one abstain. The motion carries. May I please have a motion for student number two?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to uphold the administration's recommendation for student number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
Could we please repeat the motion? It got buzzed out. I didn't hear what the motion was.
I move to uphold the administration's recommendation for student number two.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? The vote is six yes, one abstain. The motion carries. May I please have a motion for student number three?
Mr. Chairman, I move to uphold the administration's recommendation for student number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? The vote is six yes, one abstain. The motion carries. May I please have a motion for student number four?
Mr. Chairman, I move to uphold the administration's recommendation for student number four.
Is there a second? Is that Mrs. Porter? Mrs. McFadden. All right, thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? The vote is six yes, one abstain. The motion carries. May I please have a motion for student number five?
Mr. Chairman, I move to uphold the administration's recommendation for student number five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? The vote is five yes, one no, one abstain. The motion carries. May I please have a motion for student number six?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we uphold the administration's recommendation for student number six.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion for student number seven?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move to uphold the administration's recommendation for student number seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the superintendent evaluation instrument?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move that we utilize the McCrell Superintendent Evaluation System to evaluate the superintendent's performance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, is that correct on the screen? The vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students numbers one through six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Porter, is that correct on the screen?
It's correct.
The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move that we approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second? Is that Mrs. McFadden? Yes, ma'am. Motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Is that correct, Mrs. Washington? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. We'll now move to unfinished business, action requested. Item 8.1, policy revision of policy BJ Board Legislative Program. Mrs. McFadden is chairperson of the Legislative Committee. You presented this policy revision for the first reading at our previous board meeting. I will yield to you any additional information or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we do have this up for changing alteration, and Mrs. Agostini had mentioned that we needed to add language that specified that the board legislative contact person needed to be added to this to speak on behalf of the board. I did request that it be added into this so that we would have it as a first reading or a second reading for the whole thing. However, it's not in here right now, so I'm curious to know how can we move forward with this because adding any extra language, would that continue to make it a first reading with the new language, or would this continue to be a second reading?
No, we would just need to make a motion right now to add it, and we would need to write that down and give it to...
So would we be able to vote on that tonight?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir. So I'm not sure where this would go, but I think administration could put that in there, Dr. Franklin. Is that correct?
Okay, so that would be to add the language for adding the board legislative contact to speak on behalf of the board at legislative meetings for the delegation and SESBA.
That is a motion.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All right, a motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Nash. And as soon as we can get that written up, we will take a vote. And as soon as we can get that written up, we will take a vote. We need, I believe we need to specify exactly where we want to add that to what paragraph.
I think she put the last paragraph.
Last paragraph. We could put it at the end of the last paragraph. Okay.
And I think we need to add, strike out the National School Board Association as well.
It's already, it's scratched out.
Okay.
Yes, what we see up there is what we're prepared to vote on with the addition of what you just added.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments related to this?
Mr. Chair?
All right, Dr. Scott?
I would like to see us remove "will" in the very last paragraph before we insert this, where it states board members will participate in the SCSBA delegate assembly, and insert "board members may participate."
I agree.
Because that's an option. And this is more of a demand that they will, where they actually have an option to participate or not.
All right, well, let's do this. Let's... We should, should we treat that as an amendment?
An amendment.
As an amendment.
Okay. All right, so we have an amendment by Dr. Scott to change the word "will" to "may" in the last paragraph, third word in the last paragraph. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I hate to ask you a second. Okay, okay. Just for the record, I don't hear "will," folks. I'm sorry. All right, motion was...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I think we should vote on Mrs. McFadden's amendment prior to entertaining Dr. Scott.
Okay, yes, I think we can certainly do that.
I have a question about that.
Because that won't affect, that won't affect the second amendment.
No, we can just re, we can redo the motion based, but first entertain the line and make it germane to what Mrs. McFadden wants to do. Because she wants to have the board legislative contact also be a spokesperson.
Okay.
So doing that "may participate in these meetings," in my opinion, is not germane. And we, just to simplify it for the board, do one step at a time.
Okay, all right, we can do that. Let's do that. Let's vote on Mrs. McFadden's amendment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Porter.
What I wanted to add was germane to Ms. McFadden's motion.
Okay, what would your...
I wanted to add some type of language to where it's not just that the, that the contact will speak on behalf of the board, but something also added to show that what is spoken about is approved by the board. So that we don't have someone who can speak on behalf of the board without it being actual consensus.
All right, let's think about that a second. If we add, I had assumed that that would be the only time that the legislative contact could speak for the board is when the board had authorized such action. And I guess we're having a conversation about that now. So you're saying the way you read it would imply that they could, they could speak on their own and not for the board?
That's, okay.
Okay, then I, no, I had wondered the same thing when I first read it, but I believe the way it's written, it will...
It is.
You have to have the authorization of the board to speak.
Correct.
On behalf of the board.
Okay.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's go back to Mrs. McFadden's original motion, which is an amendment to add language to the current policy. And we had a second by... It was you, Ms. Nash, okay. Okay, so the motion, it's up there, I'm sorry. All right, so the motion that we are going to vote on right now is amendment to add language to our current policy. The motion is made by LaShonda McFadden, and seconded by Mrs. Nash. And it is on the board. Board members, is there any comments or questions about that language being added to our current board policy?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I'm sorry, I don't have access to that information. So could you identify the paragraph that you're reading it and read it added to the, wherever you're adding it?
Yes, ma'am. Are we literally adding it to the last paragraph? The last paragraph ends with the words "by the board," period, and we are adding to it... Could we, could I have the motion back up on the screen? So we're adding to it, I'm assuming this is a different sentence. That isn't. Okay, we're adding a sentence to the very end of the policy that says, "The board authorizes the trustee serving as board legislative contact to speak on behalf of the board advising the SCSBA and legislative officials of the board's views on legislative matters," period. And that is being added as the last sentence of the policy to the last paragraph.
I appreciate that. And I have a comment to that.
Yes, ma'am.
And at this point, I had brought it up, you know, as a suggestion because of the board legislative contact. That was my understanding of what they'd be doing for us. But in light of a vote or a conversation that I had with our board legislative contact right before our delegate assembly, and they were under the impression for one particular vote, that they had all three of those votes, I could no longer support our board legislative contact speaking on behalf of the board.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this particular amendment, this particular motion?
On this motion?
All right, seeing, Dr. Scott, did you...
Yes, I move to strike the word... Oh, have we, we haven't taken the vote yet, so we have to wait.
Okay, you're talking about your amendment.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, let's vote on this, and then we'll address your amendment. All right, board members, please vote on the current motion. The vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. Now, let's go back to Dr. Scott's motion to change the language in the last paragraph, the third...
So would you like for me to go ahead?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I move to strike the word "will" in the last paragraph and insert the word "may."
All right, is there any, is there a second?
Sec.
Okay, okay. Motion was made by Dr. Scott, and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion or questions about this motion?
I do have one question, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
So that means, like, going forward every year when we do the 31-plus resolutions, we don't have to do that? Or do we still have to do that?
We still have to do that, I think.
Okay, yes.
I think by changing that word, we simply... I can see how someone would think that all board members may be required to participate in that, whereas we can send one or more people as delegates if the word "may" makes it clear that that's the case. All right, is that, okay, that's... All right, Dr. Scott, is that what we want?
That's correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. We will now move on to our financial audit report. Agenda item in this section is regarding the financial audit update.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, Mrs. Ag...
Point of order.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
You need to go back now and approve the whole policy with those amended changes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Ag...
I move that we approve the revisions to the, to policy BJ, Board Legislative Program.
Is there a second? All right, motion was made by Mrs. Nash, and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. And thank you, Mrs. Agostini, for pointing that out. I had overlooked that. All right, Dr. Franklin, are we ready for the financial audit update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mrs. Nancy Williams, our senior chief financial officer, is here to give us an update on the district's audit for the 2022-2023 school year. And she also has a recommended proposal from Dr. Moore. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Franklin. I stand before you to give a brief update on the FY23 financial audit. I'm pleased to announce that the Brooklyn Two Finance Office submitted the audit to the State Department of Education on December 1st by the statutory deadline. That audit report identified no findings in the report. And the finance team here at the department is, at the district, is hopeful that we will be removed from fiscal watch. Hopefully by February, when the Department of Education reviews the audit reports of all school districts. And the CPA firm Burkitt, Burkitt &amp; Burkitt will have a representative here at the January 9th board meeting to go over the results of the audit. But I just want to take a brief pause to say thank you to the entire business services team for their hard work and dedication in getting the audit reports submitted. And not only just doing that, but their individual and collective efforts in working together, being resilient, and their perseverance in being such an awesome team. So I do want to thank them for all of their efforts. Okay. So the '23 audit revealed that the district's general fund, fund balance increased by $17.1 million. Given that number, I still want to draw your attention to some needs. As we discussed a couple months ago, the district does have several needs related to preventative maintenance and technology. Roughly $27 million for this year, and an additional $32 million for next year. And the needs continue to go on from there. And again, you've seen this slide before, but then we also, of course, have those needs that we know about related to making sure that we're able to fairly compensate our staff and make their salaries more competitive at, for certified and classified positions. And again, as you know, we're going through a salary study right now to kind of identify the best way to make that happen. We still have those expanded needs, again, related to the growing needs of our population, related to mental health and the growing number of students in poverty. Talks are underway related to, you know, making improvements to the working conditions and finding out those needs from educators. Of course, you know about the additional safety needs we have here at the district. And the one that's really looming right now, it's that S R funding cliff. We have some positions that we'll definitely need to make sure that we're able to fund on a recurring basis that are, that are much needed. You know, positions like our attendance interventionists and some folks in our preschool special ed program. And so lots of needs are there. So, let's see. So within the next 60 days, as I said, the auditor from Burkitt, Burkitt &amp; Burkitt will be here to give the official presentation of the audit. Dr. Moore will be back before you to talk to you about her proposal, proposal for the use of the increase in fund balance. We know we'll be talking to you again about the funds needed for preventative maintenance and technology and the best way to meet those needs. And we'll be starting the budget process for FY25. And we'll be back before you to kind of discuss how to best fund all of those needs. But as you guys, not guys, I do apologize. As you, I know that you are desirous of making sure that we're able to provide a mid-year bonus to our staff. So Dr. Moore's proposal is that we give a $500 bonus to our full-time, full-time limited and part-time employees. A $250 bonus to our temporary employees, such as our activity bus drivers and our guest teachers. This bonus would be paid out on December 22nd to all staff that are actively employed as of November 30th. Okay? And the cost of that, again, is $3.8 million. Let's see. I do believe that's it, Mr. Chair. I'm available if there are any questions.
All right, board members, are there any questions? All right, may I please have a motion regarding the audit update?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the superintendent's proposal for a mid-year employee bonus that will be distributed to employers prior to the winter break.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing done, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. All right, let's take a look at the draft agenda for the January 9th meeting. Dr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The agenda items for the January 9th regular board meeting include the call to order at 5:30, at which time the board will approve the agenda. The board would then go into executive session to discuss student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult ed program, employment recommendations and certified releases, breach of contracts, and contractual matter regarding board legal services. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will resume public session, but we will have an inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by the approval of the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the previous meeting and our classified employment releases and in-district transfers. Following that, we will engage in public participation and then vote on the executive session items. And for unfinished business action requested, as Mrs. Williams referenced in her report, we will have the official audit report by our auditor presented that night. And then we will review the agenda items for the January 23rd board meeting. And then we have our standard, if needed, items to include public participation, executive session, and voting on executive session items. We'll conclude the meeting with board and superintendent comments, and then adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the January 9th, 2024 agenda or to a future agenda?
Mr. Chairman? Oh, go ahead. Oh, I was just gonna say, a safety and security update from our committee.
Okay. I'll tell you what, just to make it absolutely official, would you like to make a motion to add that?
I would like to make a motion to add a safety and security update to the January 9th, 2024 regular board meeting.
All right, is there a second? Is that Ms. McFadden? Okay. All right, Mrs. Nash has made a motion, and it was seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion or questions? All right, is that correct, Ms. Nash?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Dr. Scott, did you have?
Yes, I wanted to make a motion on the superintendent's contract, extension on the superintendent's contract at the January 9th meeting, if we can add that.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Dr. Scott, it was seconded by Ms. McFadden. Is there any discussion? All right, Dr. Scott, is that correct, as it's written?
No, that's not correct. A discussion. No, we'll be voting on that. We'll be voting on it. So it should be an action item. Do you guys need me to repeat that, or are you clear over there? Okay. My motion is to have an action item for the board members to decide whether or not we will move forward with an extension for the superintendent's contract. At the January 9th meeting.
All right. Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Is there any other additions or modifications to the draft agenda we'd like to make?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
So I know that in a recent briefing, there was information about working conditions, and I think there was either a team or a committee or something that came together at the district level. I would like for the board to receive that information because I am all for the bonuses, but after a while, I've heard this from teachers, that it's not about the money if, you know, we continue to get the increases, but we're still going into the same environments. I'd like to, for the board, to be able to get information on what is administration in our schools doing to address the working conditions at the school level. I really would like for us at our work session to have a very robust conversation around this because there is data that has come from several different sources, and it would be great if we could have teachers, members from our teacher forum to be a part of that conversation so that we can actually put action items in place and not just continue to, you know, move on. We do know reasons why teachers are leaving, and it is because of the working conditions. So I would like to see, even if it's not on the next agenda for our upcoming meeting in January, but even if it's at our upcoming workshop, we need to talk about working conditions. It is not something that we just need to, you know, allow to just continue to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else related to the agenda we'd like to discuss? All right, we will move on to our board and superintendent comments. We will start with Dr. Scott.
Great meeting, I'll be very quick so we can get out of here pretty fast. First thing I want to say, thank you to Pastor Bruce Robinson. I don't know if you guys are aware, but he's one of our brilliant former students from Ridgeview High School, so it was great to see him present the inspirational moment today. I also want to say thank you to Mrs. Williams and her team on a great audit report. Thank you so much for that. And also, thank you for the mid-year bonuses. I'm quite sure many of my colleagues, if not, I know I received some emails, with just a few employees not happy with the $500. But I often remember what my grandmother said, something is better than nothing. So I'm very grateful for the $500 because it could have been nothing. It may not be what you want, but at least it's something that your colleagues, my colleagues and I, wanted to make sure you leave with something. So I'm grateful for that $500 that you're going to get. Also, Dr. Franklin, thank you so much for filling in for Dr. Moore today. You did a fabulous job, so thank you so much for that. And also, just want to say Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone. And I know that you guys have worked extremely hard, and we see it, we hear from you, we support you, we love you, and just thank you for everything that you're doing. Also, to our wonderful students, thank you. Although we sit here and we have to talk about discipline, just remember, we have 29-plus thousand students in our school district. There are a lot of you that's doing the right thing, so we want to thank you. And also, we have great students who come before us, and they've made just one mistake, and we understand that, but we have to follow policy and procedures. So I want to say to our students, our parents, our teachers, our community, thank you for your support. Be safe over the holidays, and I look forward to seeing you in January of 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Ms. Agastini, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. First, I want to start off by saying thank you to Dr. Franklin for being a great guest, superintendent. I want to wish my mother, Debbie Burke, a happy 85th birthday in Fenton, Michigan. I want to share with you all that I've been a huge disappointment to my husband and my children because they thought until August of 2023, I was COVID invincible. Over the years, I probably tested three dozen times and never tested positive, and in August and this morning, I tested positive. So that is not why I'm with you, or that's why I'm here this evening at home. And finally, I'll just finish with, please have a happy and safe winter break. Good night.
Thank you. Mrs. McFadden.
I want to say it's been a great first semester. It's not over with yet, but it's almost over. Shout out to my own precious ones, Jalen, Justice, Liberty, and Noble. I have three kids who are currently in band or chorus, and so in lieu of being there with them, you know, I'm joining you guys. But that's okay because I can record it and I get firsthand knowledge at home because they sing and do that all at home. So I just want to give a shout out to my babies tonight, and for those who got to see, I can't wait to see them. I think there was a performance earlier, I'd like to see that. And I just want to say thank you to all the students, teachers, staff, and everyone that put in all the hard work this year. This is our last board meeting of the year, so we'll see you back in January. Y'all have a blessed, safe, happy, and holy, holidays, and a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mrs. Washington.
Want to say congratulations to Ridgeview High School for winning all three of the BASH games over this past weekend. Those boys did not come to play, y'all. There are a lot of talented students across our district. You can see them, you know, over the next week or so, performing their various instruments, concerts. So I just want to say kudos to all of our students. Thank you to our schools, our support staff, our volunteers, our partners, our guest teachers, and you got a part of the bonus as well. That is something that, that really excited me. And then to our district office staff, thank you all so much for a great first half of the year. Ridgeview and Westwood, you did a phenomenal job at your winter events, and I can't wait to visit some additional schools over the next week. Richland II, thank you so much for all you do. Enjoy your winter break, and we'll see you in 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Mrs. Nash.
Okay. All right, so one I want to say, last night we had a safety and security meeting, and it went really well, but I wanted to say a special shout out to the two students, the three students that served, because they came with some really great insightful things about dealing with a lot of the behavior issues that we have, some of the issues that our students care about. So you guys stay tuned for a lot more updates about kind of what they came up with. I feel like one of them even came up with some legislation that we could use around vaping. So stay tuned for that because it was really, really good. But also, I want to thank Ms. Katina Davis for being there last night, but as well as giving us individual special needs updates for our students. That's something that we're really looking into in ways that we can, you know, work to be better in all the ways that we can. So thank you all for the mid-year bonus. Way to go, team. You guys made it happen. And then also, I have a little buddy in one of our elementary schools. Her name is Maggie Medlin, and she apparently got interviewed by the communications team, and for some reason, she thought I should be there. So I wanted to say, Maggie, I'm really sorry I was not there, but a special shout out for you just being who you are. And then, happy Bookman Road for your 25th anniversary. What an achievement. Congratulations. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there because I had another meeting. And then just to everybody, have an amazing winter break. It's been a really hardworking year. I feel like we have definitely improved from where we started, and we're just going to keep getting better. By the next time you see me, I unfortunately won't be able to attend all the winter events because I will be in Hallmark Town. So everybody have an amazing Christmas and a happy new year.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Mrs. Porter.
Happy holidays and happy winter break to everyone in Richland II. I too enjoyed our BASH this last weekend at Ridgeview High School, and my family enjoyed it as well. Thank you for that invite. Thank you to our Ridgeview High School scholars also for inviting me to your AP English class for To Hear Your Projects. That was fantastic. And also, thank you to our student leaders who are here today in our room. We appreciate you, and of course, love to see that you are taking an active role in knowing what's happening in our district and what we're doing here at our board meetings. I also want to say kudos to the Legos First Competition. I had the opportunity to watch that competition this past weekend, and our Sandlapper Elementary School, kudos to you, and Center for Inquiry and Summit Parkway Middle School, you did a phenomenal job this weekend. And to the volunteers who spend so much time, I mean, this competition was an all-day event, and we have so many staff members who go outside of their daily responsibilities and spend time and pour into our students. So this is a well-deserved break for you all. Thank you so much for everything that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Dr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we end our season of gratitude and anticipate the upcoming winter break, on behalf of Dr. Moore, I take this moment to express deep and sincere appreciation to our almost 4,000 employees. I applaud your commitment and passion for the work you do every day. You are indeed the heartbeat of our school community, and you continually enrich not only our students' school experience, but their lives. Your resilience and commitment to our students are truly commendable. Your collective, purpose-driven efforts help to ensure that our students are future-ready. During winter break, please be sure to practice an abundance of self-care. Rest, recharge, reflect. Again, thank you for all you do. I wish you a joyful winter break.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. You should have took longer, though. We're very, very pleased to have her with us tonight. We really are. I would just like to be, just express gratitude to everybody, especially those in attendance here, and everybody in the office here that does things and makes everything work. Would like to share what we did about a week and a half ago. Several of us, the majority of us, went to the South Carolina School Board Association Legislative Conference. That's probably not the right lingo, but close enough. Anyway, we went, and I was one of the delegates, and it was actually, I hate to say it, but it was almost enjoyable in the, we, we actually had a lot of confusion, but during the legislative voting and everything, but it was so great because I understood everything that was happening. So I was very pleased with myself. Having said that, though, I'm grateful that Mrs. Agastini pointed out tonight that I completely forgot to finish the one agenda item there, but I appreciate, I appreciate people keeping me alive because I need all the help I can get. Anyway, I'm looking really forward to next year. I'm so glad this year's over with and hope the next year's a little calmer, but regardless, I'm grateful for everybody in my life that makes things a little easier, all those people that go the extra mile. And having said that, let's have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to adjourn the December 12, 2023 regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Scott. Let's just hand vote on that. All those in favor, Ms. Agastini, if you would, would say yea or nay.
I vote in affirmative, yea.
All right, it is unanimous, we are adjourned.